I'm going to call the August twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. And as we always do, I'd like to take a moment of reflection. So you can think about things going on in your life, in your town, in your state, in your country, around the world. So let's take a moment to reflect. Thank you. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance there by Councilman.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, I will close this portion of meetings. We go to public hearings, which is the council's intention to adopt a resolution or resolutions regarding the proposed financing of development, renovation, equipping, and improvement of the town's wastewater treatment facilities, in part by the issuance of a general operation bond to be issued in a principal amount not to exceed eighteen million, six hundred thousand dollars. Is there anyone here to address this issue?
I just wanted to highlight for council that this is, we originally went out for public hearing on this loan at fifteen point six, because that's where we were at the time. They have, VRA has extended that to a total of eighteen point six million at a half percent interest, with nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of loan forgiveness. So the amount of repayment is about seventeen six. So just wanted to highlight that change.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I will close the public hearings and I am going to ask Vice Mayor Hackett if she will read the consent agenda to save my voice.
Item A, approval of minutes of August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and August twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-four. Item B, monthly bill list. Item C, resolution in support of the New River Valley Metropolitan Planning Organizations, Virginia Department of Transportation's smart scale application for the Roanoke Street US Route eleven, four sixty business improvements project. Item D, set town council public hearing for October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four for a rezoning request by Roger Woody, registered agent for RWW thirty-four LLC applicant and property owner to rezone property located on the southeast corner of Sherwood Drive Northeast and Maid Marian Lane Northeast and adjacent to the US Route four sixty bypass, approximately two point three one acres of a ten point two two seven acre tax parcel four nine nine A twelve, parcel ID zero one eight zero eight five. From R one single family residential to B three general business, the property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the two thousand and thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Item E, set town council public hearing for October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four for a conditional use permit request by Roger Woody, registered agent for RWW thirty-four LLC applicant and property owner to allow a ninety unit townhome residential development in the B three general business district on property located on the southeast corner of Sherwood Drive Northeast and Maid Marian Lane Northeast and adjacent to the US Route four sixty bypass consisting of approximately ten point two two seven acres. The property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the two thousand and thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. And item F, set public hearing for the disposition of property located on the western side of Silver Lake Road Northwest, point zero five acre tax parcel five two five dash two dash six three, parcel ID zero eight zero three two three for September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So move. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Madam Clark.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
That is six eight. Thank you. We have no introductions or presentations tonight. We'll now go into citizens' comments section. Reminder, if you'd like to address council, come to the platform, to the podium, name and address, and direct your comments to the chair, which is me.
Chris Wallace, thirteen seventy Rubik Street. Mayor G, let's get out of Mexico and get a little wild.
Had a wild heritage today downtown.
Of course, it's on the agenda in light of tourism. I did a little figuring on it, you know, an agreement that expired July thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. So you've been paying for a year into something that the agreement on it expired. And after that, you voted to get out of it, to give a year's notice to get out of something you don't even belong to anymore. And even the county, when I spoke with them last night, said, yeah, it's been done for over a year. In nine years, going conservatively with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, that's one point three five million dollars. Does anybody in the town think that they got one point three five million dollars worth of value out of that tourism agreement for nine years? I don't. And the town's been keeping two hundred and two thousand five hundred of that money because they keep fifteen percent of the one percent locally for tourism. And I can't find in the budget, well, actually Christine can't find in the budget because I hate doing figures. She can't find where that money's going either. It sounds like a big sludge fund. And, you know, the fact that it took the town attorney to point out at that work session that the contract expired last year, you know, the person on the board, your town manager, should have known that. You know, right now, there's nobody in the office for tourism. Well, part-time, the assistant county manager's in there, part-time. But just, and Tanya's like, at the, at the meeting, Councilwoman Hackett was like, well, I don't want to stop giving the money. Well, then why didn't you vote to get out of it? And Mr. Jenkins is about the same way. He's like, but we really need to be in it. Are you really getting one point three five million dollars over nine years' value out of it? Because I'd say no. And even with the supposed grants that you may get from being as part of some tourism thing, I'm pretty sure they're not going to equal that amount of money. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Hearing no one, close citizens' comments. Committee reports, uh, this group committee. Central business.
We're meeting tomorrow, six fifteen.
Six fifteen? What else we got?
I have nothing.
Water and waste?
No.
Okay. I think that's got us. Under discussion, um, in action by mayor and council, I'll again ask Ms. Hackett to read this for me.
A rezoning request by JTCI Electric LLC, property owner and Joseph Iskinder applicant to rezone property located on the west side of Depot Street Northwest, also adjacent to the south side of four oh one Depot Street Northwest, tax parcel five two six dash A dash one five eight, parcel ID zero seven zero six six six, consisting of approximately point two five four acres from R two two family residential to B three general business. The property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the two thousand and thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. The public hearing was held August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. I will, this came before planning commission, and planning commission voted three to one against allowing this.
I make a motion to not approve their request.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussions? Madam Clark.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
There's five ones.
A conditional use permit request by JTCI Electric LLC, property owner and Joseph Iskinder applicant to allow one residential dwelling unit apartment on the second floor of the proposed general office in the B three general business district on property located on the west side of Depot Street Northwest, also adjacent to the south side of four oh one Depot Street Northwest, tax parcel five two six dash A dash one five eight, parcel ID zero seven zero six six six, consisting of approximately point two five four acres. The property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the two thousand and thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. The public hearing was held August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Make a motion not to approve the request.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. Madam Clark.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
There's five ones. Thank you.
Item C, reappointment of Randy Wingfield to the NRV Passenger Rail Station Authority Board of Directors for a term beginning September one, two thousand and twenty-four and ending August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question? If, um, by any chance, like Randy was retired during that meantime, is there, um, he wouldn't have to be required to be a part of it, correct? We can reappoint somebody else or?
I think the bylaw said that we have to have two representatives from the town that don't necessarily have to be elected officials.
I think one of them has to be elected and they both have to live in town, I think are the, the two requirements.
But we could, we, we still have the authority that if, if, if we want to remove somebody from an appointed position, we can remove someone from an appointed position. So at that point, if Randy's no longer working and we want someone else to fill that role, that's, that's within the authority of the council, so.
Even if we bought it for four years, is that correct?
We can still remove somebody. We can, if we can, if we appoint the police chief and want to remove him, we can remove him. That's our authority as the council. Am I incorrect in saying?
It's pretty cold, isn't it, Chris?
Not necessarily, Chris, not necessarily, Chris, but, uh, but we can, we can remove.
I don't think that Randy would be locked into anything. You couldn't compound him to be doing that position if you wanted to.
Correct.
Any other discussion or questions? Madam Clark.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
That is six eight.
Item D, Montgomery County Blacksburg Christiansburg Regional Tourism Office.
I would like to make a motion to actually get out of it. Paying for this tourism thing until we figure out what we're doing. Because even the county from what we heard from Mr. Wallace, they don't even know, there's nothing making them, you know, take the money or whatever. So we have been giving them money that we can actually use for other purposes. And I would really like to have the answer to Valerie, where is the money that is, that Mr. Wallace was saying that was the fifteen percent in tourism?
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Motion and a second.
Clarify the motion again, please.
Clarify is to withdraw immediately. Is that correct?
Yeah, to, yeah.
What, how's that, how's that withdrawal any different than the, the last withdrawal?
Because the last time, we thought we were under contract and we are not.
Okay, so again, we, we've already, we've already voted to withdraw from tourism. I mean, I know what we're withdrawing from now.
I would like to have the money given back to Christian, well, not to stop making payments to Montgomery County for tourism.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Um, I'll just, if we're going to get out of that, I'll just clarify disclosure and statement now, uh, which says that I'd like to declare an employee of an organization making more than five thousand dollars annually that does receive a commercial benefit from the tourism office. With that said, I can fairly and reasonably participate in any vote, such as concerning the matter as my employer is part of the three organizations that receive said commercial benefit from the tourism office.
Madam Clark.
Are we going to have any more discussion?
Sure. I thought we'd already had it. Any other discussion?
Again, I'm not, I'm not sure what we're voting on.
And to start making any payments to Montgomery County right now.
So you vote, are you asking to vote to deobligate, deobligate the funding that we have obligated?
I, I just, I think it's interesting that this is on the agenda since after our work session, I know several council members wanted some additional time to think about the discussion. So I'm just personally kind of disappointed to see it on here when the council said we would like to talk about this some more in work sessions.
And, and I, I think that we've, we've, we've bantered about tourism for a couple of years now. And what we want from tourism, or really, what we've said is what we don't, um, and, and Chris, to your point, I started two and a half years ago talking about how I didn't think we were getting what we deserved out of tourism and, and was a catalyst in pushing this ball forward. What I think we owe tourism at this point as a council is what do we want from tourism? Regardless of who we're giving the money to, whether or not we think we're going to keep it internally and try to do tourism as a town, uh, I think this council has done nothing more. And when I say that, I'm, I'm including myself at this point, is to say, the only thing I've said is I don't like what I'm getting. But I think that, and I, I'm sorry I missed the last work session. I had COVID and was out. My intent during that work session was to try to, to encourage us as a council to come together and say, what, what do we see, uh, tourism that represents Christiansburg look like? Because no matter what we do with the money, uh, stop giving it to, to the county, bring it here, put it in this pot or that pot, at some point, we have to say this is what it, what it looks like. And there should be a matrix that says, here, here are the things that we want, what we think Christiansburg tourism looks like. I hear all the time that, uh, the county or the Blacksburg will make the statement that, um, you guys have all the resources, you have the hotels and the restaurants. Okay, well then, I, again, you can bring all the tourists you want to the surrounding area. We're going to reap the benefit from it. But are we a sports tourism? You know, what, what is it that, that we as elected officials think tourism is supposed to look like? Because all we've said is what it doesn't look like and we don't like what, I, I statements. I did not like what I was getting, um, to the point that I sat down with the previous tourism director and spelled out a list of, of things I wanted done. And, and so I'm not sure we're resolving anything with, with casting another vote. Anyway, my, my vote will be that we're not going to, that, that whatever the motion is, is, is no. Until we sit down and come up with something that we can tell whoever's doing tourism for us what we expect out of them, then us casting another vote that we're not in tourism, we're not in tourism, is pretty much futile in Tim's opinion.
I just, I think we've been really reactionary to the mismanagement of tourism. And I would like to see us be strategic in discussing, then what do we want out of tourism? Internal or external, I would like to know what we want. And that was hard for folks to articulate when we were at the work session, which is why taking some time to think about it and consider those discussions would help us to articulate that and then provide some, if we, if regional tourism is the question, is the answer, some guidance and some strategy and in what we would like to see from regional tourism. I do not want to react to regional tourism based on the mismanagement of the last few years.
I have been in town council for over four years and for many, many years before that. This has been a part of one of the things that I feel like a lot of this money is being wasted. I do feel like we have not received and we have not been represented well.
I agree.
And that's over two million dollars of the town of Christians. Well, we can, we can say it all day long that it's not Christiansburg taxpayers because it's a lodging tax. But at the same time, I do feel that it is all to, for transparency is also due to the, you know, the hotels. They are having to charge an additional tax because we told them we're going to provide the services. And I would rather, you know, lower it to even if it was eight percent or even seven percent to think about that maybe they can do a lot better job representing themselves and getting more people to come to the town than we, we have done with that money.
Do you think hotels will do tourism? Is that what you're saying?
I think that that's what they, they're thinking is. I mean, I do see a lot of the people that have been involved in the has, I mean, in the hotels industry promoting Christiansburg. I mean, we even saw them in town council meetings coming over here and talking about how we needed the new park, how this was going to fill in all of the hotel rooms and how, I mean, I would rather, I probably think that they would rather see it being spent in a park than they would like to see it spending things that are not working with the town. I haven't seen the product for the money that we have paid you.
I agree with that, but I don't think hotels do tourism.
I mean, the, the town of Blacksburg.
I don't think you've got any argument from any of us that we don't think we've gotten our money out of it.
The town of Blacksburg pays seven percent in lodging tax. We are nine percent. We could lower that and make us look a little bit comparable to what they are.
What do you think that, that would do?
I think that will give them the choice to be able to promote themselves a lot better than while we're promoting them. Because this is really a tax for them to help, for us to help them.
But what funding? Whether they do that on their own now or we reduce the tax, that changes nothing about what funding they use for tourism.
I think we should give them the option to, to do that.
They have the option. They could use funding right now if they wanted to to promote tourism. That's not what hotels do.
I don't know, but I don't think that this two million dollars that has been spent in the last years have been lost.
Agree, but it, but.
What can you see? I mean, even the website is, is, I don't think we're getting.
There's no argument about that. There's no argument about that.
And I don't think, and the question right now is, I mean, we don't even have a director right now. There shouldn't be an office, even on the contract, you say Montgomery County or the offices were going to provide a space for them. It's been a rental place, uh, I mean, for years now, they're renting a space. I mean, it's not even in one of the county places or one of the places that we, you know, that's costing taxpayers money or, I don't know, I just don't feel like we should be giving the money to Montgomery County right now when we're not getting anything in return.
The question I have, Ms. H, is if you drop, or that tax rate from nine to seven, that's four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
I am not saying to seven. Let's do it to eight. That's money that we, we don't have right now.
That's money that we won't have in the future. So in order to do that, what you have to do is take non-resident taxes and apply it on to our residents' real estate taxes in order to make up that difference in the budget.
That is not.
Doesn't make sense.
That is not, because if it's eight percent, you're saying that we're using one percent of lodging tax to pay for the tourism. So that one percent should make it eight percent. I think eight percent is a lot better than nine.
I can see, but either thing, anything you do will.
That's still a lot of money that we invested.
I've got the floor. Will come as a tax increase to our property owners if we have to make up that resident.
No, if it's nine.
Yes, it does.
Nine if it is one percent. It is not. Because you're charging one percent of the lodging tax to say that it goes to tourism. So where is the rest of the money that is?
So I've got a motion on the floor. Madam Clark, if you would call roll.
Mayor, if I could say one thing, I don't think you can unallocate funds once they're then allocated. Val, correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I think it's like you've spent that money and you can unallocate it. What we could look at is exactly what it was allocated to, whether it was allocated to tourism generally or allocated to tourism.
And I think, I think Val and I's understanding with the budget is that it was budgeted towards tourism in general.
No, because that eighty-five percent of the one percent is in one budget line item and the fifteen percent is in another one. The fifteen percent being expendable at council's desire for any tourism advertising, regional, like, then the other being allocated to tourism. I would say it's budgeted that way, but the budget's based on what the lodging revenues are expected to be during the renewing from the contract, which I'm not sure I understand and, and if we're affecting it.
It was last year.
So are we no longer obligated under the contract?
No, we're not.
I have some of this question. Let me say about that.
That was the county's answer too. You can ask them.
Madam Clark, would you please?
It would be really good, Valerie, if you have a conversation with the county too. And maybe the lawyers can get involved in that because, to be honest with you, they don't even know what to do with that either.
Thank you. Madam Clark.
Can, what's the motion? Because I'm not sure what we're.
Defund tourism effective immediately, basically is what you're asking. Correct?
Okay.
Madam Clark.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
That is forty-two. The motion is defeated.
So where you, what's your plan, you guys, for this? Are we going to have another work session soon?
I would like to. I'd like to put it on a work session and I would like for us to each come with some answers to some brainstorm questions about what does tourism look like when it's successful? And consider that there could be benefits to internal and externally managed tourism, but just define what that looks like and come ready to share that and put what we think tourism needs to be together.
Correct.
That's the same thing we talked about during a work session.
Yeah, but come ready, but yes, yeah, just start that conversation. We'd like to continue it.
Thank you.
Well, the reason why this is coming up like this too is obviously there has been, I feel like we're not doing a service that we're supposed to be providing right now and we're not providing it. And so therefore, and the county knows this, they, they have really found out that, you know, there is not contract in place. So they're like, what are we supposed to do with this money now? So I think, you know, it's all to Christiansburg to figure out, you know, how we're going to figure out how can we get the money back if that was the case or how, um, because I mean, that is a lot of money. That is a lot of money.
We, we get the money part of it, but, but even, even with the money part of it, we, we owe, my opinion is we owe our citizens what does tourism look like? And, and we have to define that. That's what Ms. Hackett was just saying, is that we, we need to define whether it's internal, external. What do we expect? What is it that we want from this money that we are going to spend on tourism one way or the other? And, and so at, at some point, we have to sit down and make that decision. And, and I'm not saying that we can't have the sports folks provide us with information, town folks provide us with information on what they think it looks like as well. But, but this is a document that we need to provide to whomever is going to do tourism for us that says, here's our expectations. And, and if we enter into another agreement with county, the county tourism conglomerate, then, then it's going to say, here's the marks on the wall. And in this new contract, and at any point you fail to, to make this, this isn't a, you get twelve months' worth of money, your, your payment stops immediately. And we come up with a, a new method for doing this, that, yeah, we're, I, I, I'm not saying, and I've never said that I didn't think that, that the regional tourism wasn't a value. I said we weren't getting what we, uh, the return on our investment out of it. At this point, when we give them a document that says this is what Christiansburg expects from you in, in the document, and, and if in fact you don't meet our marks, we reserve the right to withdraw it at any point and no, you don't get twelve months' worth of pay. That's, that's what I'm hoping we can, we can as a group come up with as civic leaders.
I think the thing that bothers me the most is in ten years, that hasn't been the thing. So what's changing with this group overnight that's going to produce results?
You, you have, you have people like us who are elected, monitoring, managing it. That's, that's what's changing, is that, is that we had a group of people who were, who, uh, were sitting here before, had other priorities and didn't focus energy on it. And you, you know, it, where energy's focused is where things will happen. So the fact that, that you've got several of us up here who have a passion for this, we're gonna make sure that they do right by our town.
Well, I think one of the issues, up until the previous, previous director retired, uh, things appeared to run smoothly. And whether we got the best production out of the recently retired director, that's point of, that, that's a point we can all take one way or another. But I think in the past, we have shown that it can work. Uh, the last two years or three years being probably not such good years in my estimation. But I think tourism is, is something that we need. I mean, we rely, whether you, whether it's the hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year that we pay or whether it's the other three, four million dollars we get off of lodging taxes and certainly meals taxes and this type of other stuff. You know, if they come to town to stay, they're gonna, they need a place to recreate, they need a place to shop, they need a place to eat, need a place to stay. So we will benefit, uh, the more people that come into Christiansburg, the more we benefit. And you see that in, in, in increased sales and, and I, I noticed that the sales tax figures seem to be going stronger this year. And the lodging tax seems to be kind of low. Doesn't seem to be much more. So with that, Ms. Hana, this motion from Ms. Hicks is to withdraw immediately from the county.
We've already voted.
I really did.
We voted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good. It's even better. I told you I had a head cold, was I?
Yeah, you already voted.
It was not doing well. So getting back into tourism, I think that, that we, we received some documents this evening, but, uh, we probably need time to spend to talk, talk over a recent proposal. And I do understand that, that Chris Lawrence is doing this on an interim basis until they can hire someone and, you know. I think a lot of it depends on our decision as to whether they can hire somebody or not. Or we all go back to doing it ourselves, which would be an additional employee this time. So I would like to see this as part of a future work session maybe next morning.
Yes.
Agreed.
Satisfactory?
Yes.
Staff reports, town manager.
Okay, I'll just point out that the next, uh, Saturday, September fourteenth, from three to seven will be the Rockin' Main, uh, also Food Truck rodeo combined event. Uh, that'll, like I say, be actually a, uh, extra two hours because of the combination and, uh, we've got an extra band playing. Uh, I don't plan on averag, basically bringing the street vacation to you as I am viewing it as a town event, uh, like the other Rockin' Main events. We were already planning the event. DCI is participating with us in, in inviting food trucks, but like I say, we were already planning the, the Rockin' Main event, so, uh, and we have-
You're planning another one, one more time?
I, I normally bring street closures to town council for private event request. I don't bring them for town events. Like our Chris, our Christmas parade or our July fourth event or, or things like that. Like I say, I bring them for, for private events, but our, our Rockin' Main, our Rockin' Main events, I don't normally bring those street vacations to them. Street closures.
And this may, um, I guess I have to say this may, um, affect, let's see, can you let me go? Um, and so I'm gonna make a comment about like the, um, this may affect or more than one business or two, whatever, um. You got really good at this, maybe too. Concerning this matter, this doesn't even pertain to me. Anyway, but anyhow, so I'm gonna comment because I own shop downtown, but, um, even if I didn't, I think the town should do just like everybody else has to do. And I think that should be brought out by town council, always make it very public that those streets are gonna be closed and which ones, at which time they are gonna be closed. Cause it's not fair that everybody else has to follow the rules, but we don't have to follow the same rules. And that's just-
We did come up with a policy, I guess, a few, few meetings ago in regards to notifications for, uh, our, our spe, our special events and, and special events in general. So we, we plan on, we, we, yeah, we, we plan on following that.
Okay, just making sure.
Uh, okay, uh, September twenty-first, uh, that's the following Saturday, from nine to four will be Wilderness Trail Festival. And they've already been to you for a street vacation, or street closure. And I was just gonna ask in regards to the September eighteenth work session, a few of the things that I've kind of heard is pending. Do you still want tourism?
Tourism.
On the, on the discussion, emergency services request with the county, are you done with that or would you want to include?
We're not far off along with that.
Are you asking about putting it on the work session?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, would our next step be a closed session to discuss any potential properties versus a work session?
Yes, I, I can, yes.
Okay, maybe that'll be our next step so we don't have to put it on the work session.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, that, correct, we were planning that maybe the next meeting because Billy said he wouldn't be ready for this one. Yes.
Perfect.
Okay.
For the, for the work session or for town council? Can we have it through town council?
For, for the closed meeting, for closed meeting in regards to property discussion.
Oh, okay, that's one.
Okay, and, uh, also we've mentioned the Main Street program or I think Tanya had mentioned that.
I would leave that one for another time.
Councilwoman Bowman had mentioned outdoor advertising.
I, I think the next meeting, that we have enough to talk about tourism wise-
Yeah, I agree.
That, that it'll take the whole meeting to do nothing but tourism.
So just tourism.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, and we can move the other items to the, to the October meeting.
Yep.
Consensus, I think.
It is.
That's all I got.
Mr. Brown. Any other staff? Council reports. I would like to congratulate Mr. Jenkins and Mayor of County Musano, a very, very successful period of days. They had a lot of vendors, a lot of people. Uh, it was well organized and well, well planned out, so Casey, I hope, I hope y'all did well with it. Mr. Bishop.
I have no report.
Ms. Hicks.
I do want to bring something up, since the position for economic development is open right now. And I think you advertise it, right?
Correct. Small, small business solutions manager.
Yeah. Is there any way that we can actually have a discussion about this one? Cause I would really like to entertain to find out before we even get into having another employee once again. To find out what did it really actually do for us? And is that something what, that we should still, you know, have for the town right now to make this payment when we have emergency service people that we need to pay? And things like that. I would really like to have a discussion about this position, cause I know you pushed to get that position. And I was, I wanted, I was interested about finding out what that actually meant for the town. And, um, I really think that I would really like to know more information about what that position can actually do. Um, and see if there were actually any good results from the past position that was there as far as regarding bringing businesses to the town? And how did it actually work? How much revenue did it actually bring to the town, um, by having that position open? If that's something that we can discuss on one of the, maybe a work session or maybe a town council meeting.
Or at least certainly before we fill the position.
Yeah, for sure.
So, right, I'm sorry. Is this a new position?
No.
No, the, the-
Okay.
Small business managed solutions managers, uh, is, is, uh-
It's been, a position's been filled for over a year.
So that should give us a little bit of like information. Did it actually work? How much revenue did it actually create? How many businesses did it come in because of a person filling in that position? And if it is not, can we actually look into, maybe I'll, can we allocate the money for other things that are necessities in the town right now? Uh, is that something that can be done or, because can we, maybe we can answer that to me.
Thank you.
Can, can you answer that for me? Can, can you guys and can you, and can I probably just say, will somebody buff me up and just to leave the position closed for right now or whatever? And stop for right now until we have a discussion? I would really like to have a discussion about this.
If it's the consensus council for me to leave it open for now, I certainly will.
I, I personally think it's a valuable position, so I, I'm not, I'm not willing to not pursue hiring somebody to fill this position. And I, I, I am very confident that the data will show that, um, what, what we got from the person who filled the position was very beneficial to the town and for what we asked for that. And the programs that we already have in place that are supposed to be transpiring over the next couple of months. This launch Christiansburg program, uh, needs somebody to, to fulfill it. So I personally don't support leaving, not pursuing, finding a, a person for it.
I would like to have a discussion to find out what those metrics are. Uh, how much did we actually bring in and maybe we can have more information.
And we were getting, we were getting messages on a monthly basis that showed us what was, what was transpiring.
I saw emails where-
What's that?
He showed that she made with email.
That's not the type of metrics you need in order to find out whether somebody's job is, um, good for the town or not. I mean, to me, I would look at different things and I would like to have a conversation about some metrics, especially in new jobs that we're thinking about bringing on, like tourism and this position to make sure-
This isn't a new job we're bringing on. This is an existing position.
No, it's not. It's pretty new. It's pretty new. But to be sure that it is a good expenditure, I'm not against it. I'm all for small business and big business too. But I do want to make sure that we're, we have metrics in place that we can get true measurement of success. And, um, I'm not fully convinced that what I'm seeing every month does that.
What metric are you asking for?
I'd like to see a survey from the businesses that were, um, you know, that were helped to see what they think, because they're the people that are being served.
Would that be a satisfaction of the person, of the, a metric of the satisfaction of the person who was previously in the position would, are you think, are you thinking that would inform?
The person who received the services.
So-
So that's what I would like to see. That would give me some real concrete measurement of how the business people are receiving the help. And that's what's important to me.
Do you mean like a survey of, of the person that supported them or a survey of the resources they received?
The businesses that were served.
I know, but are you saying the metric that the survey asks them for is?
I think that we could sit together and put those metrics in place and discuss that, but I would like to see the proof and the pudding.
I just, I also think that's tied to whomever's in the position, which isn't, isn't a metric that tells us if the position is a success or could, it might not be. And not saying that, I, I just, I think that's a hard metric because that's very-
We shouldn't be afraid to look at those metrics.
I'm not afraid to ask, but I do think it will tell us more about maybe the person in the position versus the effectiveness of the resources.
Yes, and sometimes you need to make a first nail change.
Well, right, she's not here though, is, is what I'm saying. So we can't, if it is about her support, we won't be able to change anything about that. And I don't know that we can make a, a hiring decision based on how they perceived her support.
To me, it's not about the job. It's about the business owners, okay? And is it serving them well? If it serves them well, it's gonna serve the community well. So that, you know, that's just what I'm looking for personally.
I think Tim hit the nail on the head with the, uh, uh, the launch Christiansburg program. That's what I'm just concerned about. I think, I think the work that, and the data did speak for itself in the past year. However, in the now, I believe Christina, that is falling on, within your office there to address, which is another added task. And, and that's a pretty, I expect it to be a pretty robust program, um, which would entail a lot of work as well. So that immediately would be a reason I'd like to see that position filled sooner rather than later.
I would really like to see some more information before, you know, we, well, we, I like what you said about the tourism. You wanna know, you wanna tell them what to expect from them, you know? And I don't feel like that there was a lot of findings about this position in the past for me. I, I mean, there were a lot of ideas and things like that and a lot of, you know, going to meet businesses and stuff, but I did not see any real value to that as far as like in numbers. I want to see numbers. I want to see, you know, maybe like what, um, you're talking about. I'd really like to see what were the answers? Were there any questionnaires from the business owners that we can get actually any information that can, we can base? Uh, is that job right now getting the, the finances back to the town? I, I always think about that, um, we're supposed to be receiving something from those positions. And right now I feel like our budget, it's so, I'd rather see another emergency service person paid for, for a position that I don't think right now to me. I haven't seen a lot of value. And I'm a business owner. I never got a even, I'm not saying that because of me, but I have known other businesses that also did not get contacted or nothing. So I want to see more value into this position. I want to see what can that bring to the town. And I think this is a perfect opportunity to maybe speak to you guys and see, well, what are you expecting from this position? You know, how much money? Are we supposed to get money back from this? Uh, is this, um, when I saw it first, I thought it was a money creation for the town and a business creation for the town.
So I think we need to post the position and fill it as soon as we can. The launch Christiansburg thing is a huge driver of why that needs to be. And I don't feel very confused about what that position's responsible for. I think the emails we received monthly told us a lot about the services that were provided and the new businesses that were opened and supported. However, I also think it's a great idea to potentially survey those businesses who are receiving the services because there's gonna be different metrics, metrics of new business development and metrics of business satisfaction. We can measure new business development, um, but business satisfaction, that could be something that would be a good indicator of, is this person providing good services? Does this person need additional support? What needs, what can we do to change? I also think that's something that Randy can, like Randy can put a survey together. He can run it by us, but like I do feel like that's a management responsibility. That position's gonna report to, uh, well, I guess they reported to the assistant town manager before. That assistant town manager or whomever that position reports to needs to review that data and, and ensure that the position is providing services to business owners and they're finding that useful. So I think we should, I think it's, I don't think we should delay posting the position for that, but I do think that's something that we should consider going forward.
Well, the position is advertised. Is that correct?
Correct.
There's, is with any of them, it's open until filled?
Correct.
So there is no ending time specific?
There may be a, there may be a review begins date, but there's not an end to date.
All right, very good. Um, Ms. Hockett?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Jenkins.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Wilson.
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Bowman?
Nothing, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for a closed meeting under Code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one A three for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of potential purchase of property located on the northern side of Roanoke Street for public works purposes.
Second.
Get a motion on a second. Discussion. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is six oh. We will take about a three, four minute break to get the room brothers.